Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. All proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present except Alder Person Phillip, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Move for approval, President Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, that the following two items on the consent agenda are approved by the Common Council, the Common Council minutes of September 26, 2023, and the suspension of the downtown parking regulations for the upcoming holidays, Friday, November 10, 2023, through Monday, January 1, 2024.
Thank you very much. Any comments, concerns, questions? Hearing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communications?
First of all, I just wanted to introduce Jessica. She is the new deputy city clerk.
Welcome, Jessica.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, thank you.
I'm enjoying the townships or the cities so far.
Yeah, thank you.
So far, she said.
Yeah.
And then discussion and consideration of canceling the second common council meeting in December 2023. So as you all know, this is done every year. This meeting would fall in December 26, which is the day after Christmas, so I'm assuming we obviously are okay with canceling it.
Ho, ho, ho. Discussion and consideration, we could vote on that. We'd look for a motion to cancel our meeting by Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Webb.
Motion by Alder Person Carroll, seconded by Alder Person Webb, to cancel the second common council meeting in December 2023.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next, we have appearances and citizens comments. First item is introduction of police officer Taylor Cunnig by Chief of Police McFarland, along with the administration of the oath of office by our city clerk, Shannon Crowkey.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here before you this evening to introduce and have sworn in one of our newest patrol officers, Taylor Cunnig. Officer Cunnig graduated from Barron Area Senior High School and went on to pursue his dream of being a police officer by receiving his bachelor's degree at UW-O'Clare. He served in the Army ROTC for two years before enlisting in the Armed Forces. From 2015 to 2021, Officer Cunnig served in the US Army National Guard. He attended basic training at Fort Bedding, Georgia, and was named distinguished honor graduate of his graduating class. From there, he went to the National Guard, his National Guard unit based in Menominee. While serving, Officer Cunnig used drones, participated in a few, and participated in a few state emergency situations, activations. He went down to Miami to assist residents of Florida through Hurricane Irma, attended the riots in Kenosha as a guard member, we all remember that, and was deployed to Afghanistan. Post-college, he was hired by Waukesha County Sheriff's Office and was enrolled in Law Enforcement Academy at Waukesha Area Technical College. He likes watching Wisconsin sports and is a huge Packer fan, and loves to golf in the summer. Taylor has three dogs, which keep him extremely busy and occupied. Hunting is a big hobby of his with his dog and with his family up in Barron County. Officer Cunnig and his wife, Hallie, who is a native of Hartford, always wanted to get back to Hartford to settle down, and they've done just that. So, Shannon, you would?
Aye.
Officer Taylor calling.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply.
Do solemnly swear I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Hartford.
Of the City of Hartford.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Hartford Police Department.
The Hartford Police Department.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As law enforcement officer.
As law enforcement officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Officer of the Year Award.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to present the 2022 Officer of the Year Award to Lieutenant Richard Thicken. At the conclusion of each year, staff are asked to submit a recommendation for the Employee of the Year Award, and for 2022, when asked, Sergeant Zwicki recommended Lieutenant Richard Thicken. Sergeant Zwicki had the following to say. I've had the honor of working with Lieutenant Thicken for almost 23 years. Lieutenant Thicken has exemplified what it is to be a great public servant. Lieutenant Thicken has served as an officer, a detective, and now lieutenant. Lieutenant Thicken's knowledge, skills, intelligence, and his ability to effectively communicate with all people make him an asset. Lieutenant Thicken's dedication to ensure that each of us strive to the mission of the Hartford Police Department is evident in his work product. During what would be described as a very trying time for our profession, Lieutenant Thicken's learned his job assisting in dealing with COVID protocols and interruptions, kept morale high, took a management class, and helped make it all work. And I can tell you, having done the job that he took for me, it's a, it's a very strenuous, it's very involved, a lot of technology, and he did a great job at all of it. Sergeant Zwicki goes on to say, the most remarkable thing he finds is Lieutenant Thicken's, even considering all the other challenges, still concerned himself with officer well-being. He made time on the busiest days to help those that lack computer skills without complaint, even when the fix was as simple as putting paper in the copier when someone couldn't figure out why they couldn't print from their office. He did it all in stride and often with a smile and a laugh. Sergeant Zwicki said he's witnessed other officers and supervisors gravitate to Lieutenant Thicken's office with any number of questions, and sometimes just to talk to Lieutenant Thicken. And it always makes time for these officers and supervisors, he always makes time for them. And the level of respect he has earned from members of this department throughout his career is something most of us can only hope for. This respect does not come naturally just because of a title. This respect is earned through dedication, compassion, and the knowledge that he possesses. So, Rich? Congratulations on this very special recommendation from your peers.
We're going to just move ahead real quick to item D, a transient merchant's license for investment products and retirement planning for Edward Jones. Would you like to come up and just introduce yourself?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Ryan Gonzalez. As the application says, and you mentioned, I'm an associate with Edward Jones Financial Advisory. We provide financial and retirement guidance to retail clients and businesses. I have submitted the application. Part of our business model is to attract new clients by meeting them out in the community, establishing a personal relationship, and that would include, you know, going door-to-door and soliciting our services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, I just wanted to let you know we'll have your license ready tomorrow afternoon, and you can pick it up in the administration office where you filled out the paperwork.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And here hopefully is a man of few words, and that is our county executive, Mr. Josh Shouman, to present the state of the county address. You have three glorious minutes.
My alarm's gonna go off in three minutes. So, I have with me today a memorandum that my executive assistant Tara's gonna hand out. This was shared with all of the chief elected officials over the course of the last few weeks, and it's a working document. Basically, I'm gonna cut to the chase in regard to what the state of the county was really about, and that was something that the county's been working on for over a decade, and that's pushing for more shared services and consolidations amongst municipalities, counties, et cetera. What you're gonna see in front of you, and as you get that, to stay within my three minutes, I'll jump you straight to the end of proposals and walk you through just a few things that we're proposing. I am proposing in my budget, I believe the county board will approve, but also that it will go beyond that. First of all, one-time funding tomorrow at the Public Safety Committee meeting, we are proposing an allocation of up to $150,000 to hire a firm somewhere across the country, the best firm in the, in the nation, to help us analyze how best to handle EMS countywide as we run it, continue to run into challenges with rising calls and staffing challenges throughout the county. That, I believe, will be approved tomorrow at Public Safety Committee. The next section, the ongoing section, these are all items that have been included in the 2024-2025 budget, and there's an opportunity for more to come. I'm almost halfway through my time, so I'm gonna go really fast. You'll notice the allocation specifically for Hartford here with Consolidated Dispatch, that is the expense the county is taking on, not the expense relative to your budget. I know those are two different numbers, so just to be clear, this is the portion that it will cost the county moving forward. We are going to specifically allocate money in all of these circumstances, but what's more important for you to know is there are several other sections that apply that we are welcoming you and every municipality participate in, things such as crack filling or ditch work, shared IT services or GIS, where we already provide those services. As I tell people all the time, the county is one of the five largest employers, county government is one of the five largest employers in the county. We have the economies of scale. If you, if you work with us, for example, on IT, we don't just bring an IT technician, we have cybersecurity experts and programmers and directors and so on. Finally, the last page with 25 seconds to go is a multi-year grant program. The water main replacement for lead laterals is, is going to be a program specifically for the city of West Bend. They have over 800 lead laterals, but the fire and EMS grant will be countywide. The chief elected officials have asked us to spell out a formula on how that, those dollars will be shared, but it's a million dollars a year for three years, and I'm out of time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Anybody, good timing. Of course, please understand that the three minutes was in jest, but the executive showman was respectful enough to take on the challenge.
It might be in jest, but that was the gist.
Okay, and we appreciate that. So I just wanted to open up the floor. If anybody did have any questions as regards to this, you'd be more than, you could address them directly to Executive Showman.
Josh, the fire EMS grant, thousand a year for two years.
Yes.
Only applies to municipalities that do not qualify for lead lateral grants. What kind of deal is that?
So the intent here is the city of West Bend is the only full-time, truly completely full-time fire and EMS department in the county. This, we went into greater detail in the conversation with the chief elected officials, but suffice it to say, they're kind of their own animal. They're also kind of their own animal in that they have over 800, I think it's close to 850 lead laterals. So we're gonna attack that particular issue with them. The rest of the municipalities, and they likely also won't directly be a part of whatever the future EMS countywide looks like. So this particular piece will try to be, provide some equality in how, how dollars are shared, and be able to do it in a way that ultimately frees up money in your budgets. That's our goal.
It's just confusing how lead lateral grants got mixed in with fire and EMS.
Well, we tried to keep them, that's why we're trying to keep them separate from one another. They're really separate, and I don't, we don't want to have, basically, we don't want the, any one municipality to be able to double-dip.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. If we don't have any other questions. Josh, thank you very much for taking your time to come here and explain this and leave something that we can actually chew on and get a really good idea of what the chief elected officials had gone over in detail with your help. So thank you for that. I appreciate it sincerely.
Thank you for the time.
You bet. With that, the mayor's report, mine, is just a very sincere thank you to all of the individuals who had something to do with our Pink Pumpkin event. They call it a Pink Pumpkin Run, but we had run, we had races, we had music, and a lot of the city showed up. It was interesting that three days before, the temperature was 80 degrees, and then it was in the 40s and got up to about 50 when we had it, and when I was waiting in the Rubicon, pushing little pumpkins along with several other of our Hartford youth who very kindly volunteered. We did have a lot of volunteers working in that. It meant a great deal to everybody who participated. They did a wonderful job. I think that the Pink Pumpkin event is becoming quite a standard in Hartford and will continue to go and grow. So again, thank you very much for the Chamber of Commerce, the bid, our Business Improvement District, and all of those who participated and who worked at it. That was a wonderful thing for the city, for a wonderful cause, for the breast cancer. So, thank you. After that, we have aldermatic requests. President Resniak.
Yeah, just a big thank you from the residents of Pleasant McKinley neighborhood. The alley got dug up last week, got filled in with new gravel, and got blacktop today. So the residents of that first block from McKinley to Pleasant are extremely pleased and would like to send their thanks to Darrell, John Griffin, and Steve, who managed to find some money to pay for that project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Carroll.
Just would like to welcome the new officer and congratulations to Officer Thicken, even though they're not here.
But, but our new assistant clerk is, so again.
Oh, and welcome to you. Well, I already welcomed her the other day.
Yeah, I know, I know. Alder Person Reagan.
Just one thing. Attended the Mid-Morene Dinner Meeting on September 27. Just a few things of note. The presentation was by the Monarch Library System, going over basically shared library services within the county. It's a very, very extensive program and a very beneficial one, so that was a lot to take in and learn from them, so that was kind of neat. Also, the Mid-Morene Committee is getting a new executive director. Mike Miller was stepping down, and Scott Middlestead is the new executive director of the Mid-Morene Organization. And then one last thing in the business, they just reiterated their support for the Washington County sharing the sales tax.
Thank you very much.
Two ladies gone.
Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Person Webb.
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Kohler.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Alder Person Savage.
Nothing tonight.
All righty. With that, we have standing committee reports, finance and personnel, Chairman Resniak.
One item tonight, discussion and consideration of approving an amended Class A liquor license for J&amp;M Limited, which is the Westside Mart, due to a change in registered agent. Shannon?
So, J&amp;M Limited Westside Mart filed a successor of agent form. It has now been changed from John Krepke to Mandeeb Dran, so I need to be able to issue an amended license.
Any questions or comments? Not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, for the new license, all those in favor, we have to, we gotta get a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Alder Person Reagan, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Reagan, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, approving an amended Class A liquor license for J&amp;M Limited Westside Mart.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have Public Works. Who handles Public Works?
Alder Person Phillip is not here tonight.
Okay, so are you handling that, or is he just?
What's that?
I suppose I can read through that. That would be fine. For Public Works, with the chairman of that committee there, I will take that for Alder Person Phillip in his absence. We're looking at the discussion and consideration of amending ordinance 340.0014-sub2 to allow bid permitted parking in the Mill Street parking lot. We have discussed this before, but if there's anything else that you'd like to add, we will turn it over to our city administrator, Steve Olker.
Okay, so the, at the Public Works Committee meeting last week, last, or last month, I should say, we had proposed the idea that was brought forward by Jason Wicks, the current president of the bid, who had requested on behalf of his membership that we extend the parking that is currently allowed under the bid parking permits to not only be able to park on the Johnson Street parking lot, but also be able to park on the Mill Street parking lot, which was created back in 2018. We reviewed the information which was provided and found from our staff that patrol that area, that there is ample parking available during the times of normal business hours of 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM in the 83-spot lot. We feel that the added parking that could be brought on by shifting some of the parking that's currently in Johnson Street to the Mill Street lot would not interfere with allowing for ample parking for customers in the downtown area, which was the original purpose of this parking lot. And so, the recommendation of the staff is to assist the downtown business employees with convenient parking during the hours of 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, since the parking lot in question is identified not to be busy during those hours. Staff recommends the amending of ordinance number 340 dot 0014-sub2 to include the issuance of paid parking permits for the Mill Street parking lot. Again, we will be monitoring that after one year to find out, again, if this is causing any issues with available parking for customers in the downtown during those hours, but it is our recommendation to amend the ordinance. Any questions? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Looked for a motion to move forward on, on the amending of the ordinance for 340 to allow the bid permitted parking in the Mill Street parking lot. Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Garza, to amend ordinance 340 point 0014 subsection 2 to allow bid permitted parking in the Mill Street parking lot.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. Motion carried. Second item is discussion and consideration of a resolution to change winter parking regulations with alternatives provided. We have our head of Public Works, Darrell Krantz.
I will take care of this one. He's just here for eye candy.
He does have a nice tan.
Every year, the, the city deals with several calls of individuals who are having issues with having ample parking in their driveway and garages during the winter season. As you know, starting December 1st and through March 31st, we do not allow overnight parking between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM for the purpose of leaving those hours open for plowing during snow emergencies and snowfalls. I, I gave you probably a dozen sheets on this whole, looking at the, the different policy and different options for policies. Basically, with this, we, we came up with, and talking with several communities throughout the state of Wisconsin and how they deal with it, the end of the day is there is no perfect option. Something is gonna cost you more, it's gonna cost you more time, it's gonna cost you more money, it's gonna, there is no perfect option, okay? So anything that we do is gonna have some problems, and any change that we make is going to, is going to, again, have some issues with it. And so we brought forward, again, five different options. One is keeping the existing policy in place with no changes. Again, we would not allow overnight parking, except for up to three times for the same car throughout the season. You can call in currently and get allowance for your car to park overnight. This is primarily meant for a situation in which you have an overnight guest, maybe during the holidays. That is the, that is the only exception that we have to this rule. The second option would be opening up additional, additional options in public lots, and that would be, we'd open up additional parking on North Main, excuse me, South Main Street, also along Independence Park, where, again, the streets are wider and would also allow for parking, but also have free lanes for travel. Along with that, we have additional parks in which they could park in, including Woodlawn Park right across from the mayor's house. So, that, there is no, there is no relation there. But anyways, so we'd have different parking areas in which somebody who would have, let's say, a week-long guest could park in those parking lots and/or overnight parking on the streets, as long as they're moving them during the day, so we can plow out the area, and they can plow, and they can park back on there. Option number three is allowing parking on grass. This would be a maximum of two vehicles. They'd have to be a Class A vehicle, in other words, a car or truck. No campers, no, you know, trailers, that kind of thing. But this would allow up to two vehicles to park on the grass during that period of time. The fourth option was permitted parking on alternate sides of the street. This would be free parking. Communities like West Bend do this, where Milwaukee does this, where, again, they can park on the opposite side of the street based on the date. If it's an odd date or an even date, they can park on that even or odd side of the street and then have to move it the prior, the following night. And the option, the final option is permitted parking on alternate sides of the street, which means those people who want to take advantage of even and odd parking would have to pay for a permit to do so. So those are the five options in which we reviewed from other communities. Again, each one has its pluses and minuses, and again, we've spelled that out in the very extensive report in which we've handed to you. At the Public Works Committee two weeks ago, the Public Works Committee reviewed this and looked at a, a hybrid approach, which would include keeping what we currently have, along with allowing for permitted parking, and also opening up public lots. Again, there is 100 different ways in which we could skin this cat, but at the end of the day, you, you see what the differences are and what the additional costs would be for the different options. So, this is up to you to ask any questions you have. Alder Person Resniak.
Darrell, what's the worst scenario in this whole thing? You're in charge of snowplowing. What don't you want to see?
Odd and even, odd and even, we do not want that at all.
Pain in the butt, right?
Overall cost, if coming out again the next morning, if it gets a drop temperature, very cold at night, when a car moves, trying to move that windrow is, you're gonna go through twice as much material, and it, it just makes it harder. We really want to stay away from odd even. We also have a lot of streets that only have one-side parking, which would make it more difficult, but that's the worst scenario. What the Public Works Committee came up with is leaving things the same as they are, is open up some of these parking lots, I think is a step forward.
Sure.
To help, and we'll see how it goes again, and we can visit again in the future, but I think that's really a, a good start, at least, to see what we can go with there.
I agree. Thank you.
I think, just one note, like, when we discuss this at the Public Works Committee?
It's on, but I don't think you guys are, I don't think they have you guys turned on, because we can't hear you.
Okay. The idea was that we would do, open the public parking lots, or whatever lots we, like, identify, and then we would do the alternate parking, permitted parking, but only on streets. but only on streets that were wide enough where you could do that. So, if it's a narrow street, you wouldn't do that, because that would be a nightmare.
Yeah. You couldn't do that in first, second, third, fourth, fifth, one of those.
And Alder Person Webb brings up a good point, is that there are some streets that no matter what we do, you're still not going to allow parking on it because they're simply not wide enough to get a plow down and a parked car. And an emergency vehicle. I mean, that's, that's the biggest issue, right?
Yeah, and the problem with just opening public parking lots is, they're in limited places in the cities, so if you have a kid coming and they have to park at a lot that's a mile and a half away from your house, that may not be the most ideal for them. There's no great solution.
We did try finding alternative parking lots that were in four corners of the world, or in Hartford, I should say, that would make it kind of easier. Even the, by Forte Bank, the rural street parking lot there, we looked at that for the inner city. Again, we tried establishing some court, or some parking lots that would benefit people. But again, they do need to remind it after 7:00 in the morning or thereafter. They do need to move their car so that we can plow that spot open again, and they can park there again at night. So, it's not a 24-hour, 48-hours, or a week-long parking spa. They're just temporary for night parking.
Alder Person Garza.
With the permitted parking, that I would imagine wouldn't be that popular because there's a fee for it, which, what was, what was the idea for the fee, a hundred and something?
Yeah, so it, basically, we kind of ran the numbers backwards and forwards as to how we, how many people, so in other words, 1,000 people currently call to get overnight parking in the street right now. So, we figured about half of those individuals would actually pay for it. That you'd take that number and you'd take the total cost to run a second night of plowing for every snowfall. That, they're just paying for their own costs. That's why it equates to such a large number. It's, I think we figured $120 per year.
Yeah, I think that's, the fee is fine, because, yeah, it is. Here, you're having to come back and plow that one spot or two spots, whoever takes advantage of that. So, I think that's fair.
Interesting philosophy that they have in Beaver Dam. And Chief McFarland sent this to me, that right off their website, they allow for permitted parking. There is a questionnaire you have to fill out to tell us, well, how many car spots are you have in your garage? How many do you have in your driveway? How many cars do you have? Now, if you don't, if you don't have more cars than spots, they wouldn't allocate it for you. By the way, but if you do are allowed it, and you park on the street, the next morning you have to shovel off the street. I don't know what the liability is for telling people to go play in the street, but that's not my community, so.
Yeah, that is interesting. So, a lot of people snowblow their sidewalks and all into the street.
Now they'd have to, now they have to plow it back.
Now they have to plow it back.
That's why they called it Beaver Dam.
Alder Person Churchy.
So, when you guys were in committee, was the parking on your own grass, anything that you guys discussed and pros and cons of that? What was that conversation about?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, Steve's point was that people already complain constantly about cars being parked on people's lawns, and if we say it's okay in the winter, I think people would not like the look of that, but...
Yeah, the other problem is, is that we don't identify where on your grass you can park. So, can you park on your terrace, thus blocking your sidewalk? Can you park on the side, if you have a corner lot, can you park on the side of your lot? I mean, besides creating something similar to Sanford and Sons, I've just aged myself, I don't know how you do it so that it becomes orderly on your grass. Then, of course, there's the issue of dripping oil, gasoline, antifreeze on the lawn, which, of course, ends up in your groundwater, and then we've got another issue.
Well, it's a bad idea.
What's that?
Bad idea?
That was, that was considered a kind of a bad idea. My, our police, our police department was, was really not excited about that concept at all.
So then, one more question. So, what was the recommendation of the committee?
To allow people to park at the opening parking lots.
Yep.
And some streets, the identified streets, I forget which ones those were. And also, allowing people to purchase the permit to park every other street, every other night.
Alternate side.
Alternative side.
Yeah, and I think we should identify, like, what streets that would be capable of, because that means that you're not replowing the entire city, right? You're only replowing streets that you have identified where you have alternate parking.
So, did you take into account the cost of the signs for the streets that you're going to allow to, besides just the cost of the plow?
I don't think we're going to get that many people that are going to be interested in that. I think just when they apply for their permit, you give them the map. I don't think I want to go around the whole city and start putting signs up all over the place.
I agree.
But I think a map, when they apply for it, that they, they follow through that way. The other part of this whole thing, too, is just 3 to 6, and I'm going to throw my dig in there, too. During the day when there's a snowstorm, I sure wish people would park even in their driveways during the day, not on the road. It just slows us down so much. We're very beneficial that we did get another parks employee. So, with that being said, having another guy out at 3:00 in the morning when we do start plowing is going to make it easier and hopefully more efficient that we can get through a lot more streets before 6:00 also. So, it is going to help with the manpower we did acquire this year. But again, the last thing we want to see is odd and even. It just will make it really hard, especially during ice storms. We've been getting so many of those lately where I'm waiting and listening to county on the scanner that they say it's starting to get slippery, and you call the guys in. And by the end of assaulting route, they're backing up most of the roads because that temperature dropped those two degrees, and the rain had turned to ice. And if you've got cars parked on the road, it just makes it so hard for us to get the work done.
And one of the things, too, we really pride ourselves on is the fact of, we have a very good crew, and they have very few accidents when they're plowing. That is not, that is not the status quo of every community, and especially those who have even odd parking. You put more obstacles in the way, you're going to nail more side mirrors. It's just the way it is. And so, last year, I think we talked, we only had one accident all year.
We were very fortunate, yeah.
Yeah, and again, it all, it's all based on the weather. If all we have is light fluffy snow, it's different. But if we have an ice event like Daryl was talking about, there's a really good shot that we're going to slide into somebody's car, which does not help our overall budget.
Curious, too, that the, this reads, reads a resolution to change winter parking regulations with alternatives provided. It sounds almost unanimous here that we really don't want to do the parking on the grass and on the yards, and even city staff is mentioning that. Can that be removed as not being an alternative provided?
Well, the concept here is that if the council wants to change the existing ordinance, which simply says no overnight parking between 3:00 and 6:00, between those four months, you have an, there's some altern, alternatives to that if you want to pick and choose which one of those alternatives you want to use.
Okay.
And again, their, their approach, the Public Works Committee, was more of a hybrid approach of, again, doing one and the other.
Yeah, we, the opening of the public lots and then.
No, that'd be great.
And permitted.
Yep.
Alternate parking.
Sure.
Is that it for Steve?
That's all I have.
Oh, one more. For people coming in and calling into the police for one night or two nights or whatever that is if they're visiting, that still will be allowed, right, or?
Well, no, not necessarily. I mean, if you're going to have permitted parking, you would allow permitted parking. We also have to work out the details on that little, the overnight parking very well might end up being a daytime option only. Meaning, if you, you know your mother's going to come into town, and she's going to stay overnight, and you want to park her outside on the, on the even or odd area, that kind of thing, we'd have to work that in if we're going to even allow three, free, free, you know, free passes, so to speak. But you'd have to call during the day because we don't have anyone here after this Friday. We're not going to have anyone here at night to take that call. Not sure you heard about that.
Do you have a question?
Alder Person Churchy.
So, for that example, like I, we have somebody like overnight, there might be a different fee for that, is that what you're probably?
No, there definitely wouldn't be. I mean, it's overnight, I mean, again, one of the options, right now, we currently offer three free passes, right?
Right, correct.
And, and so, our officers will know which cars have been registered based on their license plate. Or they have, or they would have a permit, which allows them to do it every night.
Right, so.
They'll have a sticker in there.
Yeah, so what I'm.
On their bumper or whatever.
So, what I'm suggesting is that if I have someone that's just visiting for a night, and we say the permit's like 125, would you say like a one-night or a two-night would be something less than that?
Well, you could do, I mean, I wouldn't do a night permit. I would just, I would probably just allow for one night of overnight parking free pass like we currently have.
Okay, something like that.
Only reason because that, because my officers aren't going to look at, do you have a blue sticker or a red sticker, or, you know, when half of it's covered with snow anyways, you can't see it, but.
And with that being said, that's why we're opening up these parking lots that hopefully maybe you could drive the car down, park it in this parking lot overnight, and then you wouldn't have to worry about it. Again, we're, we're trying to find spots for people to be able to park for that reason. I know years ago during Christmas, it was very warm, and we allowed parking on the street, and we, the officers didn't ticket anybody, but if you can tell me what the weather's going to be during the holiday season, my guys want to go on vacation, too, they'll go. But no, again, it's, it's going to be all weather-pendent, but opening up these parking lots for people to park is going to hopefully relieve some of the, like, your issue right there.
And keep in mind, we, we've been pretty flexible, so to speak. I mean, we, maybe the first week in December, we just issue warnings, hey, by the way, we're now into the winter parking rules. Please do not park on the streets after this period of time. And the last week, two weeks of, of May, I'm sorry, April? April, March?
March.
March. If we know the weather's looking good for the last two weeks of the period, we usually will say, hey, we're going to lift the restrictions early. Holidays, we've normally, you know, as long as it's not a winter storm warning, we've usually allowed for overnight parking for your guests where the kids are coming into town for Christmas, that kind of thing. So, it's not like as though we're, we're just trying to be, you know, militant about it. We're just simply, just trying to get something that, again, will allow us to do what everybody else asks, because for every person that calls and says, I need a place to park, there's two others who are calling, Daryl, I, my, my street isn't perfectly dry and clean from curb to curb, so.
Not my city.
Yeah, that never happens. So, anyway.
So, if there's weather that is, I mean, the restrictions start December 1st. Say there is nice weather.
Yeah.
I mean, are you going to lift those restrictions for a few weeks, or?
I mean, again, usually the first week of December, we don't even, we just give, you know, warnings.
Yeah.
And then, if you're an Al Gore fan, you believe that global warming is happening and we're never going to have snow, that's awesome. But, I mean, we're, we're pretty lenient about that kind of thing, that there's no really option.
I mean, I know sometimes it doesn't snow until January.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, then for discussion and consideration of a resolution to change winter parking regulations with alternatives provided, would look for a motion approved.
Do you know which option that you're presenting?
I'll make a motion for public lots and permitted parking on opposite sides of streets, but only on streets we identify that are wide enough to do that. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a second, Alder Person Carroll?
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Carroll to create a resolution to change winter parking to opening up additional options in public lots and allowing permitted parking on alternate sides of the streets, only where the streets are wide enough to accommodate the plow.
Alder Person Reagan, question.
Carol, do you have a list of those streets?
Well, as, as I'm sitting here thinking right now, as what we used to have in the past, we're always able to get by most of the streets. I think we're going to visit it for a year here to see if there's any spots that really would be a challenge, and then maybe we'll, we'll make that list up. But I think if there's one car, one side of the road, not any other, we'll be able to get by, and I don't know if I'll have a list for something like that.
Possibly, and those areas specifically are normally like first, second, third, fourth, the older parts of your city, in which they didn't have 66-foot right-of-ways.
But I think that's where we're going to get most of our permitted parking, because there's so many duplexes and stuff up there, and they only got a single-car garage, and it's a duplex, and one, one renter's got to get out before the other. So, I think those would be the streets. But as long as they're not parked across from each other, we're able to get through. There's been times in the past during the winters when they would park out there on their own. The fire department couldn't even get through with a truck. So, again.
Do we tow them?
If it's one side, in the past, we have.
Okay.
But very rarely. It is about safety, you know.
Correct. When you say fire truck, that's a biggie, yeah.
So, I don't know if there would really be a list right now. I'll even talk to the guys about it. I think we can get through everything if there's only one car on one side of the road. You can lift the wing up and you can get by. But if you're doing full road plowing and you want to get up and down with one swipe, it does make it a challenge of lifting that wing up, and then you're leaving that snow on the road, and then later on, you do have to go back and clean it up.
So, earlier you had also mentioned, when they apply for the permit, provide them a map. So, you won't be doing that either then?
We're talking about this, I'm trying to think, what are some of the narrowest roads we have? And, and first through fourth, I think, are the worst.
Bud Street.
And even up on Center Street many years ago, I think some of you council members remember, they, they went ahead and narrowed the roads down so that developers could get more homes built and bigger yards. Wayne, you probably remember that, don't you? And I'm sitting in the back screaming, no, no, no. But again, what do you do? But there are some roads that are narrow. And if you're driving on the north side of the city, you'll see them in some of the subdivisions. But if you've got one car only, you'll get, we can get by.
So, we're going to pass on that, it sounds like.
Yeah, I'd say hold off on the.
Will the map include the public spots? Will you have a map?
Yes.
Okay, so you will have a map. It'll just be the public spots.
Yeah, I mean, and hopefully people see, like, parking in the public spots is free, or you got to buy a permit, so that will incentivize them to go there.
And there's plenty of parking in some of these spots. The only one would be the new Centennial Park. There is two parking spots, one on the east side and a west side, and I think it only hauls like eight, eight or nine cars, or I'm not sure.
Each, yeah.
And again, we'll see what we need, but I mean, if the car's not moved by 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning and moves by 10:00 or 11:00, we'll still be able to get it cleaned up. But again, we do want to work with the, with the residents, and that's our number-one goal here, is trying to work it out. There are a lot of families out there, and at the Public Works Committee meeting, we did have two or three members that spoke. And afterwards, I talked to them out in the hallway here, and, and they voiced it. They, they, when they got married, they didn't have three, four kids, and now they do. And they, they have a tight, tight fit of trying to get cars in the driveway. So, we want to work with the community.
So, does he have to amend his motion?
No, we didn't say anything about maps.
The streets, on particular streets, though.
No, I said they don't have to do it if the street is too narrow to have, like, permitted parking on both sides.
It's kind of open-ended, so it should be good.
Yeah, that's giving you a little discretion to decide where.
A little discretion of city staff, I think they pretty much know what we're looking at as regards to the comments that were made here.
If this works and it works out, we'll have the phone number and the people that got the permit. And if there's an issue, I have no problem talking to them and asking if they could park here or there, out of the way, too. Again, we want to work with the people.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have our city administrators report the third quarter general fund results. That would be Steve Olker.
Again, every quarter, we come back to you and explain where we are financially with the current budget. As of the end of the third quarter, we had 81.79% of the total general fund revenues. And that is on the high end of the scale for the prior seven years, which is a nice rebound from the second quarter, in which we were slightly on the low end of the scale. Total general fund expenses for the third quarter was 68.44%. This percentage is near the lowest it's been over the last seven years, which is good news. So, also was a nice rebound from the second quarter of the year. So, overall, staff are being made aware of their budgets, and this is the fourth quarter in which we really make sure that the department heads monitor every expenditure that they have, and any revenues in which they are behind on, and... revenues in which they are behind on, and to make sure that we can finish off the year strong. We had budgeted in 2023 to expend $366,169 from fund balance, primarily to cover payouts of retiring staff, but other additional expenses that were over our revenues. But again, we're hoping that we can exceed that and be able to not take out any of the fund balance for 2023, if that continues to be on a good trend. So, good, good news for the third quarter, and we hope to finish off strong in the fourth. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, last is for adjournment. Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Savage, to adjourn at 7:49 p.m.
All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
Aye.